Obtain wastewater license within two year timeframe. Uh, pass civil service water trainee slash operator test when next test is available. Uh, education, uh, graduation from high school or possession of a New York State high school equivalency diploma. Uh, and then lastly, uh, salary starts off at fourteen dollars an hour. For each license obtained, paid increase will be a dollar an hour. Resumes will only be used in conjunction with an application. A complete job description and application are available at the Village Hall, fourteen Main Street, Kettering, New York. Last day for filing an application. We're gonna do this today, could be June twelfth, two thousand fifteen, no later than four thirty P M. This institution is an equal opportunity employer and provider.
Okay, where do you want me to start?
Where do you want to start?
All right, I'll start at the top. Terms of hiring is limited to six months.
Okay.
It takes, you gotta have a year's experience for it to get your license.
Correct.
So how can you expect to get candidates to get their licenses like that?
Because we're assuming they've already started before, that's why it's a trainee. We're not expecting something three months.
Then, why are we giving, why are we giving a wastewater license as two years timeframe?
Because that's down the road for wastewater, but if you want, if you want the, the six months to be a year's timed, that's fine, we can change that.
Couldn't it be a trainee if you're not gonna run a train?
So then you can change this six months to twelve, that's fine.
All right, um. If we're hiring labor with wastewater.
Well, it's gonna be a, a water treatment plant operator trainee. Which primarily in the beginning, they'll be working with a water advisor to obtain all of their licenses and then we won't need the water advisor. We'll have somebody that will be an actual operator.
Yep.
All right, and then, the time being that they have left over, then they would be reporting to the D P W superintendent or streets, whatever, and helping with the streets department.
It's crucial to have somebody dedicated to.
Sure, I want a creative position where you're saying we have four guys instead of three. Right now we have two laborers and.
See, this is, this is what we gotta figure out. Let me go through the rest, the other problem I got here. Um, the salary starts off fourteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
For each license obtained, paid increase will be a dollar an hour.
Okay.
Okay, so you're talking how many licenses you, the possibility of five, six licenses plus your sewer license. If you're talking, now you're gonna be.
No, there's only three, it would be a two A, your C and D license.
Okay, plus your sewer licenses.
So then you have sewers.
Okay, so now you're talking four, so now you're talking eighteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
In, in a year's time, now if this is gonna end up being a union position like our other employees are. After a year's time, whether they have this wastewater license and have these other licenses or not. If they're a union, they're gonna end up being almost eighteen dollars an hour a year. Because that's how the union handbook is, is written.
You, I, I don't necessarily agree with the starting at fourteen because it just.
Well, it doesn't, that's, that's.
I think it should be, to be discussed, uh, regarding experience.
Well, that's the thing though, boy, it don't matter what we start, we could start about five dollars an hour. In a year's time, well, right, but you know what I'm saying. In a year's time, they're gonna be making what our guys are making now after nineteen years.
But that's part of the, part of the union. You can't stop.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, we're not really, I mean, our intentions with this originally was to save the village maybe some money.
Right.
But we're not going to because in a year's time, they're gonna be jacked right up to the, to the scales of everybody else. Now, my next question is, where are we gonna get the money for this?
We already have it allocated in the budget because we're down a person already.
We're not, but this is great in the first.
We can't, we're not talking about any one particular person.
Right. In regards to, uh, creating a position, we actually already have that position. The individual never obtained the licenses to complete that position and previous administrations never followed through with what the application that was designed for. So, we do have to fill this position that is required by the county, by the health department. We have to have something, we can't just have an interim level. So we have to have somebody to fill this position. And now, in regards to what you're probably talking down the road with the D P W superintendent, well, that's to be handled later on. But in regards to employees, we have to have a water operator that is capable and that we can rely upon and submit reports and do all the testing, everything that is supposed to be done.
You say, do the math, okay, you, you need to, you need a D P W super.
Yeah.
We don't have one right now. And we need to hire this, I thought we were under the pressure, we were hiring a laborer with qualifications like we've always done. So if you hire a guy for this job right now, and you, you hire this, uh, trainee guy, and then you hire a D P W super, you could end up with four guys. We only have money for three.
And here's, here's my other problem, if we got fourteen dollars an hour to pay with somebody, I mean, I'll, I'll do some quick math here.
It's about twenty thousand dollars a year.
Times four, times fifty-two, that's twenty-nine thousand dollars. Now, you're gonna add another eight, nine thousand dollars a year on top of that for overtime for plowing and the water. Um, so that's gonna take you to.
She'll be that high, but you never know what winter, a lot.
Right, I mean, we're just ballparking us. And what we're allotted is forty-five thousand dollars on a salary budget for our supervisor. Now, if, I mean, you're, you're, if you, we're not really saving the village any money. And then if, to, to top it off, if there's a risk, we end up with four people on the books, I, I don't, I just don't see us having the money to do it. Where does this, where, Rose, where does this money for the water treatment, where was that, where would that money come from?
Comes out of water.
Do we even have that money?
Um, water is always tight. Uh, frequently, the water fund has to borrow from the general fund. Because water, water revenues come in four times a year with the billings. Um, so you could potentially overex, not over expend, but you could spend more than you've got in revenue. And then you have to borrow it from general and then it has to be paid back to general, I believe, in that fiscal year. So water is always crazy tight because the revenue is spread out. It's not like the taxes where you get, you know, um, maybe like ninety percent of it in the beginning of the year.
Right.
Um.
So the greatest position, what we gotta raise, what I raise?
No, it's not essentially.
Can take care of itself?
That's not essentially that, I mean, under the proposed water law, I mean, it's gonna, and also with the water project that's going on, if we get the meters and everything, we should see our water revenue go up. Is what we should see, because people are, are paying, you know, a lot of people don't have meters, also for penalties for not paying on time, so on and so forth. The village should, with the meters that go through for the water project and also if we go through the water law and approve of it and make whatever little few little changes that it needs to be. The water issue should be pretty decent as far as income, it'll be better than what it is.
It will be better, um, I don't know if you can, I mean, if, if you're talking about hiring somebody with, with regular pay and overtime of thirty-five thousand dollars or thirty-six thousand dollars. That's nine thousand a quarter you need to have your water revenues increase. I'm not sure the meters, I'm not sure that we'll recoup that with the meters. I don't know that we're, we're missing that much. We could be, but I, I really, I don't know how to estimate how much revenue we might be missing out on. That, I mean, that's nine thousand dollars a quarter, that's, that's a lot of balance.
You gotta factor in how many people are getting free water now. Because of the.
Minimum bills.
Inaccurate.
There's a lot.
Dr. Crawford said there and said that once everything's set in place, the job pretty much runs itself, but there's none of the need for it, that's what I'm saying, so then this guy.
Right.
Not a full-time need for this.
Exactly, so.
Right, so the part of it, they would be working with, uh, you know, reporting back to the D P W superintendent and working with them, you know, on whatever summer projects and stuff in the morning typically. They have to go up to the sites and test the water and do all that, I mean.
So I thought we're hiring a laborer.
Even so, I think.
But they're gonna be classified as a water operator trainee first.
Like we've always done.
And then it's gonna become a water operator.
But they're dedicated to this position.
Right, and then they're, then they go and help the D P W secondly. So the first responsibility is to be on top of the water for whatever issues may arise and.
Could be a fourth person in your D P W.
Right, that's what I don't wanna see, we, we don't have that in the budget.
Usually you invent the wheel.
I don't think you can, I don't.
Can't for civil service.
My concern is hiring someone on a possible increase in revenue.
But we're not doing that, we're hiring somebody because we're required to by the county health department.
No, they.
We have to hire somebody to handle, that can handle this long-term.
And when I talk to.
Jason for our waters.
I get that, but.
I spoke to Dr. Crawford after the meeting and he said that a laborer was insufficient as long as they had their licenses and we had a plan and life plan, we could resume.
Right, and that's part of the plan, is hiring a water treatment plant operator trainee. They work with Jason as our interim and water advisor. And then they get their licenses, once they do, then Jason is no longer needed. And then they're our main operator for our water and also they work with our D P W. I mean, they're still gonna be a laborer as well, but they have to have these classifications to hold that position and take care of our water so that we have somebody that's in charge of our, to be our O R C and send our M O Rs to the state and to the county.
For long-term.
Yeah.
And you need to look at, you need to look at the laborers that we have right now, are they gonna work for work? No, no.
But here's the thing, if, if by this hiring thing here, we go to promote from within first, then the village, then the county. If we hired for the supervisor, the superintendent position, whether we promote somebody, if we promote somebody, we have an opening on our D P W. If we don't and we end up hiring somebody totally from the village or county, then we're gonna end up with four people, we, we can't afford it.
What you could do, and, and of course discretion, of course, you can post for both job locations. And then accept your applicant pool, make a decision on the supervisor, if you end up promoting from within, you can leave the laborer position open. And have the civil service people reclassify that position as the water operator trainee so that it changes what the official job duties are. So you could use those for whoever you wanna put in that position and not create a third labor position. You could have it reclassified at that point when the new person's being hired, after your supervisor position is filled, if it is somebody from the department.
But according to our things here, we, we'd have to promote, or we'd have to host the superintendent first before we do, this doesn't have a minimum.
Well, and that's not for, and that's for any position, like.
You could post them simultaneously, I'm not seeing a, a prohibition in your policy for posting them both at the same time. And it doesn't guarantee, your job hiring policy doesn't guarantee people that you're going to hire somebody. You get to make that decision if you want. This is just opening it up so that you can look at the applications and you can make a decision, an improvement decision on that.
I, I could see maybe posting them both at the same time. I can't see posting a water treatment plant operator trainee before a supervisor because we're putting the, the cart before the horse.
Maybe superintendent should have that F on the agenda and water operator should have a G to switch, so you're discussing in a different order. That seems to be what you're suggesting.
Yeah, well, I just, I can't see hiring a water person before we take care of our superintendent position.
Because we have to, because that's the county's long-term position.
I understand that, but we got Jason.
They told us.
We got Jason for what, three months?
For ninety days, that's right, that's not a long time for a water operator or a water.
We're giving ourselves, what, two weeks here for applications. We're talking a month, we could, out of that thirty day, or ninety days, we should be able to have somebody in place in the supervisor role, then take care of the water.
In the long-term, he said we're going to begin the year. Did you guys hear what Jake just said? He said we could put out the advertiser for both positions, which makes sense.
And, and I understand, I agree with that.
Take it, just hear me out. Taking applications, our intention in the back of our mind is only to hire the superintendent. Key, at the same time, we're taking in, uh, applicants, in case we hire with them, which makes sense. And if we don't hire with them, we have to go to Plan B.
Right.
Which is just hold the applications, not hire anybody, come up with a Plan B. I mean, it's, it's always.
I just, I, I don't wanna end up with four people on our workforce because we can't afford.
Just because we're advertising doesn't mean we're hiring. We're looking at applicants, because it's.
And that's fine, I, I would go with that.
So then let me ask this question, maybe Jay or Rose, you guys can answer this. Just for the predicament that these two are bringing up in regards to if we were to have four employees, which obviously fiscally we cannot afford. So we have to have a water operator and have, have a laborer and we have a D P W superintendent. And then, but technically we have two laborers, how, if we were equipped in that position, how would we eliminate one laborer's position?
If you were to talk to civil service to reclassify the open position that's not filled with laborers. Or, and if the Plan A happens, and you end up promoting somebody from within, and then you bring somebody else on to be water trainee. What you do is you talk to civil service and you say, right now they're filling what we call the laborer position, we would like you to reclassify it, please. So there's not four spots, it's just the three supervisor and the two other employees, and you're changing the official title.
Okay.
With the civil service department.
Okay. But my question, okay, so then, in regards to that though, how would you, say if we were, if we were able to promote within for D P W superintendent and say, for their scenario, that we hire somebody else for D P W superintendent, then we have Toad and John, and then we have a water operator. But we can't afford to have two laborers, we're gonna water operator.
But, but it, it sounds like you're contradicting yourself, I wanna make sure I understand, you said you promoted people from within, but you still have.
No, this is, the scenario that they're giving is that we would have four employees, so we hire.
You don't have to, you don't have to hire a fourth person.
Wait a minute, before we go, if we're gonna talk about names and stuff, that would have to be done exactly.
No, I'm saying the, in the, individuals that we have right now.
Okay, all right.
So right now we have two D P W employees.
That's right.
And then we would have, say if we hired and say, we were unable to promote within, so we hired out, now we got a new D P W superintendent, and also we're hiring out because we need a new water plant operator.
Or you list that it's a qualification you need to handle at that point and you can restructure the department if necessary.
You're gonna have a hard time restructuring. If you've got too many people to cut it down if they're union, because you're gonna have to fight the union to get rid of, and that has to go through discipline.
Just a second, that's not true, that's true if you need to fire someone. If their position has to be eliminated because another position is required for the government to operate properly, then the number of positions can be reduced. And then based on seniority, whoever's been around longer is the one who stays in the position. It is, I'm not saying that it's palatable and it's politically very unpalatable, but if the position has to be removed, not the person, but the position, so that another position can be created budgetarily, that can be done.
But we don't need that to be.
But you do need somebody to be the O R C.
And when I talked to, makes sense, I talked to Dr. Crawford after our meeting, he was, after the, a laborer and we do it the way we've always done, we just.
For civil service reasons, and when we met with the civil service, they were very clear about it, if they're going to be the O R C, then the position has to be classified.
Well, they want all of our guys to be reclassified.
Yeah, and they're, but at least if they're both working in water department, if you only have one actually doing it, the other ones backup there.
Right.
Well, they even want our sewer operator and stuff to be reclassified, they want everybody reclassified.
Right. Which we need to do, but this is part of that process of doing the classification that we're actually hiring for a water plant operator, trainee, with the intentions that they have this period in time to attain this, this, this and this. If they don't, then their employment with the village is terminated.
No, no, then, well, yes, sorry.
If they don't, like for instance, if they don't obtain their two A license within a year's time to receive a certification that is required to run our plants by the state.
That should be grounds for removal.
That's grounds for removal.
Unless you're listed after hiring, make sure there's grounds for.
And then also in that position is also to handle the sewer. And if they don't obtain their sewer license within two-year timeframe, then that can be grounds for dismissal as well.
Make sure to put in your written contract.
Can I ask one question?
Right, so that, we have one person that's handling our water and sewer, and then essentially we have two people that are focused on our D P W and streets.
Can I ask one question, why can't, why are we not looking for a supervisor that we can give this year or whatever to get their licenses? Why are we not looking for the supervisor to be that? If we went with a supervisor that did that, we wouldn't have to worry about our laborers unless we promoted from within.
Which is the way it's always been.
Then we wouldn't have to worry about a water plant operator per se, well, you would be, but he'd be our supervisor, that would be, just like what Jason was here.
Right, and then what happens when we're in a position when we don't have somebody that has that, I mean, we had our interim and we know where that's gotten us.
We've got, we've got backup operators now.
Right.
That are running stuff now. But I just don't understand if, if we hired a supervisor with these requirements, then if we promoted from within, then we'd have an opening.
Because in regards to the water, as we talked with both Eric and, and Chris, is that this needs somebody's sole attention. A D P W superintendent essentially can't be focused on everything with budgets and with streets and everything that has to go along with that, on top of handling the water, because their focus isn't able to be strictly on the water. With everything that's happened with, that's transpired and put us in the position that we're in, we need somebody that will be designated and fully focused on just the water. And then, secondary duty is can't, we're being able to help the Department of Public Works, our streets and all of that. But first, we have to have somebody that is truly designated just to handle our water. And that's what's needing to happen in all of the municipalities going around from when we had our presentation by the two of them.
So I didn't get that, I guess. He said in the beginning, it would take some time, afterwards it would pretty much.
Right, and so that weighs, but it goes down, right, right now we're in a, a storm that we have to, to, to wait for it to calm down and it settles. Once it settles, yes, then primarily, just because they're a water treatment plant operator, they're gonna be doing that maybe two, three hours out of the day and then the rest of the time they're able to go and work with our D P W. So you're still, they're still also gonna be part of the laborer, you know, helping with that, but I mean, the first priority is water, when they come in, is water. If they can alert on their phone from the scanner system and that some levels are ridiculous and they gotta go up and take care of that immediately, then that's what they need to do.
Well, starting with a laborer, right now.
At fourteen dollars an hour, that's why it started at fourteen dollars an hour because it's just a trainee position.
Union contract is seventeen.
Yeah, that's what I say.
Seventeen?
Seventeen, seventeen, union contract.
That's what I say, we're.
Plus a dollar an hour for all these licenses now to go out and pull the yard or, you know what I mean, do whatever they gotta do if we're paying the extra money to do it, instead of just being a laborer, with the requirements that you gotta have these things.
Yeah, but they even like, right now the way it's set with the, um, with the union though, is that both John and Toad get extra pay because.
No, it's just, oh, actually, we.
Uh, Toad is strictly a laborer, he gets the seventeen, seventeen an hour for everything, even his water.
That's probably.
Um, and, uh, John gets the seventeen seventeen for his labor and water, and then he gets seventeen seventy-one for his wastewater work.
Now that's all negotiated through the union first.
Yes.
So would then actual salary then have to be based upon whatever the union is?
I'd have to look and see if there's.
So salary to be determined, is that what we would put in the, you could put that.
In, in the union, um, the union, what was I thinking, what was the, um.
The contract?
Yeah, the contract.
Yeah.
It says in there, the starting salary is whatever the village salary, you know, the starting pay is what the village sets. But then it says in one year, it goes to whatever the pay is.
Okay, so if after a year it goes to that pay rate.
To whatever our guys are making now.
Guys are making, right, that's just, there's nothing you can do.
And hypothetically speaking, if need be, we could always go into another, uh, budget, we don't necessarily have to pull all this from water contract, we could always do a transfer from a different.
But we have way back water.
If you take from water, you have to backwater, so you're always being there for it.
No.
Well, if they're working multiple rates, then you can split up their pay, which is the.
Right, their, their work that's not specifically water would come out of streets or snow plowing or whatever it is, but their water work comes out of water. Um, previously Jason was split, um, half and half, his salary was, um, and, and Cory as well, were split between, um, fifty-one ten, which is streets and water. Um, that was a split half and half, and then John was just whatever he did, is where it came out of John.
Now, here's the other thing you gotta look at, I mean, I know this, you gotta start at fourteen dollars an hour, and a dollar more an hour for every.
You might not, you know, you might not wanna put the dollar more an hour, you'll say you have to get these certifications because then the union contract says, once you're around for a year, you can pay the same rate as what the contract says. Well, at that point, that would act like the dollar for licenses.
So then, in regards to the union, say this person gets, so say they start out at whatever, and then when they, if they get hired permanently because they receive their licenses like they're supposed to, and then.
Then, then, then just say their rate goes to what the negotiated rate is.
I mean, just the, just the seventeen dollars an hour, year after they start, when they go up to whatever their guys are making now, right now, you're pushing what our salaried supervisor was making. But if you add this dollar an hour on top of that, you're gonna be.
Yeah, we're saying that, no, I, I think it was discussed, it was contemplated that the dollar an hour shouldn't be in.
Right, it's gonna be listed, the salary is to be determined, which can start out at fourteen, fifteen dollars an hour, and then when they join the union or when they get hired permanently.
If they get their certifications.
They get their certifications and then they come in a, a full, then they actually.
Their rate of pay will be based on what you do.
And so whatever the seventeen and whatever for that.
Right now it's seventeen seventeen and seventeen seventy-one, but true first it goes up.
Right.
And also, what, normally with the, the D P W, I mean, is it something that, or with the streets, is it, is it something that we're hardly ever in dire straits with?
Um.
Because you're splitting, you're splitting the, the salaries of this individual.
Right.
You.
Um, I, I don't know how tight Jason used to budget. Um, Cory didn't, my recollection from the budget meetings was that Cory did not increase the D P W expenditures appropriations. He moved some things around, um, because he, he felt that what was budgeted for the D P W would be enough for the coming year, so he just reallocated some amounts.
Okay, I, I just wanna say one thing, I, I, I think we're, we're losing track of the priority, okay? Priority is water. All right, we need somebody to run it, per the health department, we have so many temporarily right now, does everybody understand that?
I understand that, but if we end up with four people, we're, we're basically spending money that we don't.
Priority is not water.
The priority was.
It's not?
No, because we fixed that at the meeting.
Kind of in short.
It's temporary.
That's short-term, that's.
If you don't do anybody in that position with the certification.
One man predicted all this at the state for the meeting, and all I'm saying is that I'm getting tired of it because he said he was happy with what he had, and we had till the beginning of the year to come up with our long-term plan so we could take care of other business.
No, that was for to handle all the other laws and stuff that he wanted us to write, but as far as somebody in that position, he wants us to get that processed.
And he told me, Toad, that, that Toad wrote, and which file was that, that he was on, or Toad, because.
Well, that is not what I was informed, because what I have been told and what I've been shown is that we need to hire somebody, when Eric was sitting right next to me, is that we need to hire somebody to prepare for long-term. That what is going on right now is what was discussed, is that our current backup water operator is not capable of being able to handle the position, and so we have to hire somebody new for that. That is clearly is what we discussed.
Well, that's not what I, I was here for thirty minutes. Probably trained in it, and that's what he told me, as long as, you know, I mean, if he has training, and then we need a backup to have that guy to help with it, and then go from there. We don't have a backup right now, we're hiring a backup, we're not hiring a guy to come in and do it, I thought we were hiring a backup because.
No, we're hiring somebody to take over the position.
How, but Mr. Reagan is how long from retirement?
Five years, five years from retirement. So.
That's supposed to be due today without being some.
Cause of next year is, let's get through all the things and then we get this fixed.
We need to hire somebody for the water position. Greg is not capable of being able to do everything that is needed and we only have Jason for the ninety-day interim unless he decides if we need to extend it with him, if you were willing to do such. But I know already from conversations with Mr. Alfred Beck that he has already put in a lot of effort and have, already have a lot of phone calls with both Mr. Wolers and Mr. Crawford in regards to what's going on. And from when we spoke with Mr. Wolers is that we have to hire somebody as a new water operator, and he said, I spoke with, uh, him afterwards, and that we don't have to designate somebody for our, uh, O R C as of yet, if we are starting the hiring process for the operator position. Because of where we're at at this point in time. So, that is why we need to hire somebody for the water first, and then they can help our D P W as it goes on, and also this eliminates from having an interim water advisor, and we actually have somebody over that position.
Let me ask you this, is there a certain term that we could go without a superintendent?
Indefinitely, they're gonna face significant problems in terms of management of your employees. Your, your supervisor you hire because you folks should not be full-time, you're here, you're a part-time worker. You hire a supervisor because they are there full-time, managing. To the extent you're willing to deal with the management hassle for the limited amount of pay that you get, you can drag on without a supervisor for some period of time if you chose to.
And that's why I, I made a comment to a few people that, um, a few of you guys, I, I thought maybe we oughta look into talking to the town to see if we could, because they're having a problem with their supervisor right now as well.
They don't.
We're the same as we are.
Right.
If we talk to the town and share the supervisor to take over our four miles of road, and the. If we talk to the town and share the supervisor to take over our four miles of road in the summer for, and for maintenance other than plowing.
Both positions are full-time positions, they can't, I don't foresee how that either position would be able to designate, I mean, the town is in their own.
I, I understand.
Storm and as we are, I don't think somebody to take both positions is physically.
So village clerk and town clerk, but we have one person that does the same.
But for DPW, you're out there, I mean, there's a lot of flood of work that accounts for both municipalities, it's not just.
Does a lot of work, I think.
So I'm just saying, it's.
It's just an option, that, you know, something.
Fill it to save money to.
I mean, that would, even if we gave the town.
Sharing the DPW position is possible, but fair warning, the agreement to do that is relatively sophisticated. Because you have to determine what you're gonna do for allocation of the budget between the two municipalities. You're gonna have to determine how you make sure the person that you're hiring allocates their time to both the municipalities and you have some tracking on it. Then goes in the liability aspect, you have to check the insurances of both municipalities so you know if that person gets injured or their acts cause somebody to get injured in one municipality versus another, who supervises, whose insurance covers. It's possible, it is sophisticated, just so you know, and that's not a process that would fill in anytime in short.
Right, I, I understand, I just, I, my biggest thing is I do not wanna see us get caught with four people on work.
It was not going to, I mean, in regards to what Jay explained is that we have to change one position so that it's classified appropriately.
Say you can post higher people, you can post job postings, get some applications back and make a decision whether or not you wanna fill in somebody to a position where we want.
Okay, now if, say we get a water, a water person, this water operator.
Okay.
We still need a backup operator.
Yes, Toad was fine.
Yeah, I.
But, but that's what I'm saying, if we end up with four people, one being this operator trainee and we have to restructure to get us back down to three, we still need a backup operator.
Yeah, so then I.
There's your fourth person, yeah.
No, then you can actually hire that out to have a backup water operator if you need to.
Is there a law that says we can't have four people? No.
It's just fiscally that we can't.
Exactly, but you can't fit the priority, people, okay? Are we saying, hey, we have ten applicants, we need to make a decision now, no.
We know how people go.
Let's see what's out there, folks, that's all we're saying, we're making a mountain out of a molehill here.
I just think you should be, the superintendent be forced to get the water certifications. Kinda like it's been done in the past and he had a certain timeframe to get his water licenses and then he don't have.
But that's what Eric was saying, is that he would rather see that somebody to be devoted just to water and not be in charge and also have to handle water. That, that stretches them very, very thin and he wants, he, he said that we should have, hire somebody specifically just for water and then can enable the labor position after they handle their water duties.
And, another suggestion, in accordance to what you said in reference to the superintendent, who says that somebody's not gonna come to the table looking for the superintendent position and saying, hey, you know what, just to make myself look better, I wanna hand you down my water certificate.
Now, I haven't discussed the superintendent job specs yet.